All right. Well, welcome everybody to our September 21st School Board Meeting. We call the meeting to order. I'm just gonna do a quick roll call, make sure all our board members are back from our prior meeting. Director Ku?
Good evening.
All right, Director Jeffries?
Oh, I'm here.
All right, Director Stoffer?
Yes, I'm still here.
Director Pickens?
Yes, good evening.
And Director Gibson, yep, I'm here. All right. Partially here, back from vacation, seeing how we do. All right. Okay, so it's called a meeting to order. Everybody's in present and if you could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, ready to join me? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Right. That's where am I at here? All right, so again, here we are, virtual meeting. See how much longer we are doing that. So we would, any, excuse me. Long first day back at work. So any public comments would be submitted into either Tracy Norman at SquimSchools.org or SquimSchoolBoard@SquimSchools.org if you have any for future. And our vision and mission statement, our vision is our community inspires and prepares each student to thrive. And our mission is in connection with our community. The Squim School District empowers staff to inspire hope and provide flexible, innovative learning opportunities in a safe and respectful environment, so each student thrives. And also, just a reminder, if you're joining us, please to maintain, make sure you're muted and if you have video off unless you're speaking, to maintain our virtual integrity here and and keep the meeting flow. All right. Okay, next up, we have the approval of our minutes for September 8th, our regular board meeting. We could get a motion for that.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve.
Great, thank you.
Well, second.
All right, we have a motion to second. Any discussion?
Just discussion. You're doing a great job so far. Keep it up.
All right, well, hearing nothing else. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? All right. Next up, any changes or additions to our agenda?
There are none.
All right, hearing none. Approval of our agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we got a motion to second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign? All right, next up is our consent agenda. Motion.
Mr. Chair, move to approve is presented.
Second.
All right, motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign? All right, we had no public comments sent into us, so with that, we are welcome back our student representatives and Senior Representative Olivia, you are up. What you got for us?
Thank you. Okay, so for the high school, the ASB elections are happening today and tomorrow. Students will have the chance to vote electronically. Mr. Romero, the ASB advisor, will announce the winners sometime this upcoming week. The middle school did not respond, but I looked on their webpage and I found out that they're emphasizing on reaching out to help students who don't have materials and by emailing Miss Holt and they're making sure everyone knows the importance of attendance. And okay, didn't I'm not responding, so I don't have a report for them. That's all I got.
All right, great, thank you and good seeing you. Alyssa? You are up.
Thank you, hi. Helen Heller said that we are busy videotaping lessons, having online classroom meetings with students and connecting with students' families. They said that the fence is supposed to be finished on Wednesday of this week, so they told us to drive by to check the finished project later this week. And the Gray Wolf Elementary said that this week, they offered a full complement of lessons to their students, wrapped up conferences, some of their grade levels had held virtual meetings, and they are finalizing the list of students who will be the first back to school. With all the things considered, they are staying positive, working hard and getting ready to accommodate both a remote and a hybrid learning. And they said that they miss their students a lot. So, that's it.
I'm muted. All right, great, thank you. Thank you. Director Stoffer, did you have a question? Or are you playing with your hand raising over there?
Sorry, let me figure out how to unmute myself. Did we do public comments or was I?
There was, there were no public comments sent in.
Okay, thank you. I just was writing my notes. Thank you.
Yep. Okay. Next up, we have our board communication, so it's Scott off and Dirk Ku.
Thank you, sir. Before we do that, I'm wondering, I'm looking at the agenda and mine has finance and enrollment tucked in with student board reps, should that? And I failed to recognize that in my motion or my second. Should that be under new business or should we pause here if that was meant to be earlier on in the agenda?
I, no, I think it's just part of the report. I think we're fine.
Okay. Um, I'll go into my comments then. I do have some comments related specifically to the ledge process, so I think I'll save those for there. Nothing, nothing big, just observations about the process. And then I know Director Stoffer did proffer a recommendation at our workshop and I look forward to discussing that and posing a couple more. But I enjoyed the discussion, appreciate the opportunity to do that. Really, I think the only thing, just using my bully pulpit for a moment, is just recognizing, obviously, the passing of a significant American figure, Ruth Bader Ginsburg, and just noting an opportunity for our students to learn about her and her work on the Supreme Court for very important things. But really, one of the things that personally resonates with me is her previous relationship with Justice Antonin Scalia. The two were ideological opposites and so I find it inspiring what they were able to have as a relationship on the highest court in the land as we're struggling right now as a nation to find equal footing and equal ground. So, just seemed poignant enough to want to mention and otherwise appreciate our teachers and staff who are back at it, enjoying listening in or overhearing a time or two with my own little students and their, their classes. Really impressed with what our teachers are taking on and and running with the football that they've been given. That's all.
All right, great, thank you. Director Jeffries?
Yeah, I would agree with Director Ku on his comments about Ruth Bader Ginsburg. And I know on TV, the news, I really appreciate as they go over her life story and what she contributed to, to the United States over all these years and why she's important rather than concentrating on what's going to happen next. So I think it was a towering figure in American history and who led her life well. I want to give appreciation to the students for filling out our survey on legislative proposals. It was, took a lot of time out of their busy schedule, I'm sure, and I really appreciate it that they're taking the time and effort to, to get involved in that. Policies, I'm still looking forward to the policies. I know we're going to approve some policies later on. And so I've still been, that's one of the things I've been looking into ever since I've been school board members, started that, so I continue that. Getting ready for the General Assembly and trying to figure out if I can withstand a whole day or not. It, that's, that's quite a bit and since I'm retired, I could do that, but it's going to be a daunting task. I got some information about my nephew, who actually went to sixth grade here in Squim, with my niece and he lived here, and he's at college now and basically he spends all day in front of his computer as a college student, trying to figure out his assignments and where his assignments are. And at the college level, professors have a little bit more independent freedom. So I really appreciate the attempts of our school district to standardize as much as we can for the students, so they don't have to spend half their time trying to find where they're supposed to be online in order to connect with their their teachers and fellow students. And appreciate all the hard work the Squim staff is doing, trying to get us off the ground and running here in good form and looking forward to hearing the reports of how we're, how we're doing, how we did and what can we do better. Thank you.
Absolutely, well said on that last part too, Director Jeffries, fully agree. Director Stoffer?
Yes, thank you. I also want to thank our students, because I was a a challenge for them and they took it on and really appreciate it, because you know, one of our goals here for our board is on student voice and we now have, though we didn't quite, you know, drill down to all the this, the student input, we do have a nice template that we can refer back to and then we can use that for future learning workshops and then when it comes time in February for our Day on the Hill type thing, so Olivia and Alyssa, thank you so much for, for completing that, that survey. From there, the Port Angeles Business Association, which meets on Tuesdays, has several debate forums coming up. Tomorrow is one on, from the Charter Review. And I can't remember what the exact Charter Review Resolution that they're debating, but encourage colleagues to listen in on that and there's a couple more that they'll be doing until the end of the month. And also want to recognize one of our high school teachers who just was recently announced as top teacher for the Olympic Peninsula and that's Dr. D. And looking back through, appreciate our Thursday meeting. That was very beneficial and sometimes we need to have those special meetings to bring us up to date on some important critical items. Thank you, so I have.
Thank you, Director Stoffer, and Director Pickens?
Thank you. Just, just wanted to sort of reiterate some of the other things that were, were said briefly, but just still thinking about our, our teachers and staff out there that are, that are working in environments and presenting, presenting content in ways that they have, have really never done before and they continue to, to to have quite a bit of stamina and quite a bit of of endurance and, and this is not, not what they're necessarily trained in, nor is it that same, that same level of connection that, that all educators are used to having, so hats off to them and also appreciate the legislative process that we've been going through. There's, there's a lot of issues and some of these issues are very important. It's a lot to take on, but I'm, I'm glad that we're really looking at the, the data and, and more talking about what really affects the, the Squim schools and the students of Squim, more importantly, so very important, especially leading up to certain, certain things that are coming up, an election coming up in November. Something that I would, would encourage, encourage everyone to be very aware of, because there's a lot of things that are going to potentially have dramatic impacts to education, so that's all for me.
All right, thank you. Not much to share here. It's just, you know, I've had, just taken some opportunity, you know, being around the community, chatted with a few teachers from different schools and, you know, just hearing different perspectives and, and, you know, again, I want to just acknowledge as the rest of my board members have the great work that, that our teachers have, have been doing in you know, putting these lessons together and working in an environment, as Director Pickens said, that is not, not common for them. They got a little taste of it towards the end of last year, but now, you know, it's full board forum here and just want to thank them for, yeah, for all the work they're doing there. And, you know, having, having a high school student myself, I get to, you know, firsthand see, you know, some of what's going on and, you know, based on the classes that she's been attending, things have been, seem to be running fairly smooth and, and watching, watching them change and grow, so so appreciate again all the work from all the, the staff and the teachers for all that and the resiliency of of our students. Probably the one piece that I miss of, from not being in person is, A, having our, our representatives, our student representatives there with us, and then the other piece is having the opportunity to have the different groups that we normally would have come in and speak to us. See the great work that the students do. So, looking forward to a time, hopefully in the not-too-distant future, where, where we get back to that piece, because, you know, this is what our work is all about. It's about, it's about the students and their progress and their education and, and how they progress and getting to hear their success stories. And we've had a lot of them over the years here in Squim and we'll have many more to come. So, looking forward to at some point, being able to experience that again and just share those kudos. So, that's all I've got for now. All right.
Chair, Chair Gibson, real quick, I, before I get to my report, I wanted to acknowledge the directors who referenced Chief, or not Chief Justice, but Justice Ruth Bader Ginsburg and her contribution. But I also did want to share about another passing and that's one of Squim High School's most famous graduates, Don Kendall, passed away yesterday. And for those of you who don't know who Don Kendall is, a former CEO of Pepsi. And he is, he and/or his foundation are the individuals who built the Boys and Girls Club. And he was 99 years old. He would have been 100 in March and, and Don K, I Wikipedia'd him and he did. He graduated from Squim High School in 1937, but one of Squim's most famous graduates and very philanthropic towards this community.
Wow, thanks for sharing.
Yeah, definitely. Thanks for sharing that. Was not aware of that, but appreciate that and, yeah. Okay. Next up, we have our finance report. Darlene?
All right, good evening, everyone. I am just going to go over our budget status reports. They're all estimates this month and I, and I wrote that at the bottom of the budget status reports as we are currently in doing year-end balancing and I know you guys remember from previous years that we're still waiting for, because we're not accrual district, we're still waiting for invoices of things that we received in the 1920 school year, so that those will be paid out of a 1920 school year. So we're kind of this month working in both 1920 and 2021 school years as far as invoices and, and things like that, so I needed to put that these were estimates on these budget status reports as we are balancing our 1920 school year, so that's why that says that on the bottom. So, as of the end of August, our estimated total ending fund balance is $3.15 million. And we are at 96.5% of our revenues for the year and 95.38 expenditures for the year, so we're really close. And then on the next page, I wanted to point out a couple of things and, and these, these numbers are going to change when we get into September and you see September budget status reports. So I just wanted to bring it to your attention, because these are things that we, we do pay attention to. So we'll have carryover of some of our grants and things, and so that amount will be different than the $55,000 that you see there. And same with the restricted for debt service amount, so we're on our last payment for some lending that we had out there and so that will be much smaller. And what that is, is the amount of interest that we need to pay and it comes from the general fund. And, and that's what will be put into that line 830, that GL 830. Down in the minimum fund balance, I think I had this here last month, but I can't remember if I, if I talked about it, but I did up our minimum fund amounts 4.5%. And I did that knowing that you can see kind of what's in our unassigned fund balance of $700,000. Knowing that whatever we have out there in warrants outstanding, that we would still be able to cover those things, but essentially, we have $700,000. It would be at our disposal if we had to, if we had to cover all the warrants outstanding or, you know, something, we would have that available to us unless we dipped into our minimum fund balance. So that's why that looks like that, but it will change in September. And it will change again once we have our year-end balancing complete. And I was, I was trying to look up the timeline, but the timeline for, for balancing our year-end is that we, we have a deadline in October, towards the end of October, and it has to be to the ESG 114. They'd look it over, if there's any questions or anything that needs to be addressed, they would send it back to us and this is the F196 I'm talking about. And then when everything is the way it should be, it is sent to OSPI. Kind of like how our budget is, our F195, our budget is sent to OSPI, same with our year-end F196 report goes to OSPI and they, and they have to approve it. So that's why everything is an estimate right now, as we button everything up. In capital projects, we have $949,668 as our ending fund balance and just a reminder, I, I'm at home now and I, and I was going to write down this number, but we have one last payment left that will come out of capital projects and, and get transferred into debt service fund to pay off our last payment June or December 1st. And it's, it's really large, so it will take this plus everything that comes in as our local levy collections in October, so everything that we receive from now until November 30th will be used to pay off that last payment. Let's see here, debt service fund, it's got the $69,000, that's just an amount that just stays in there. It's, it's, we can't move it anywhere else and, and so basically it's interest earned and if there's any, anything else that comes in, it would be there. Let me see, I'll pull up this treasures report and tell you kind of what goes in there. Well, I'll tell you what went in there this time. What went in, in August in debt service fund would be $986.83 in local property tax and a little bit like $16.95 in investment earning and that's, that's really all that's going in there right now. And we'll see what happens when we make our last payment, if we use that all up or that stays there. ASB, it's, it's holding steady. I know that there's one one thing out there that's, is happening with ASB and it's the, correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Clark, but is it the gold cards? Is that what they're called? They're
That is correct.
Okay, they're the cards that were, they were, had already been purchased and so Mr. Wicker asked if those could be for sale and so those are for sale right now, because we already purchased what we needed to purchase for those, so I, I know that he has those out there for sale right now. Other than that, most everything ASB is on hold. As you know, we, I, I don't think that anything is going forward, because there needs to be a new student body council and, and things that are left over. I know that the previous student body council is, is approving things that still need to be paid that are left over from 1920 and, and some things, but other than that, it's pretty still right now until we get moving with our students in school. Transportation vehicle fund has $638,251 in it and so we had a depreciation payment that came in of $239,529. $239,529 and so that happens every year, the depreciation on our buses. And as our buses come off the depreciation schedule, that's when we look at ordering new buses, so that our buses always stay on a depreciation schedule. And then a couple of buses are kept as backup that are off of the schedule usually. So, if you remember in the F195, I did budget for a couple buses, two or three buses to be able to be purchased if it comes to time when we need those buses this year. But we do have the, the funding for that. And so, and, and just a reminder, we don't, we do not pad our fleet and so we, we do keep our buses to about what we need and don't have a bigger fleet than what we need and which would not be financially prudent of us right now anyway, but we, we don't do that. So just, just a reminder, we still, one of the big things that we still have coming in for our year-end are, I just, just today was the deadline for claiming August grant claims, so the revenue that will come in, that will not come in until September on apportionment. So that's an example of one of those things that we're not done receiving revenue for 1920 yet, because I just claimed August expenditures, so that we would receive revenue against those grants, so there will be some things that, that still come in and that, that's one of those things. You have any questions on the budget status report?
None here. Any, any from the board, see, raise your hand. Director Pickens?
Thank you. So I know you said that it was an estimate and because there's still things coming in. When I'm looking at the ending fund balance, the 3.1 million, is that within itself? an estimate meaning, or is or is that gonna, if more things come in, more bills come in, will that will that be potentially reduced?
Yes, that that will change. So that ending fund balance, Eric, will change as we receive both revenues and expenditures. Whenever we still process, even into October, we're allowed to still process some of those things and have done so before. Where we're cleaning up, you know, purchase orders that are hanging out there and they haven't sent us an invoice. But yes, that ending fund balance, as we pay those invoices or receive revenue from the grant claims, that ending fund balance will change. And so you notice that it is a little bit higher and keeping in mind that we were fortunate enough that we did not have to use some money set away, set aside for the like the gray wolf sewer for capital projects. I have that set aside. We know that day is coming. It is set aside for that, if it has to happen sooner rather than later. We also, you know, were able, with this ending fund balance, we were able to make the decision that as other school districts were reducing their staff's hours and furloughing their staff, we just we made the decision that we would not do that. And so they would just pick up duties as assigned to be able to keep their hours and and keep their keep their salaries for the next couple few months. And so I thought that was really important that we do that. And just see where we end up with, you know, our students coming back and we try really hard to just be really financially responsible and and keep our employees employed if possible.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? All right, Darlene, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, next up, we have Dr. Clark.
That'd be one year birthday.
This is what I did this weekend.
Awesome.
So yeah, these, these two little toe heads both turn one, well, one, the the one in the far left is one year, one today. And the one in the right in the middle, the girl, Emery, this is Emery and Kayden. Emery will turn one on October ninth. So it was a, it was a busy fall for grandma, not so busy for grandpa. But we had all the kids there this weekend and it was fun.
Glad glad you got some family time.
Yeah. Well, first off, again, I would like to echo what a couple other directors said. I enjoyed the meeting on Thursday night and we talked, we got to talk about a lot of things. And one of the things I did tell you that I would bring to the meeting tonight is December eleventh is the date we, it's a Friday that we have to have our resolution in to the county auditor for our both our E P and O levy and our capital projects levy. And that will be run on February ninth, the second Tuesday in February. So the other thing is, again, to echo what everyone else has said about how hard we're all everyone is working, the teachers are just doing tremendous jobs, the parents are helping out. Food service kicked in last week. We served a little bit under eleven hundred meals and we hope that will go up when students get their meals. We they get a lunch and a breakfast every day. In some cases, they get multiple days. And we're taking buses out and we're trying to get food hooked up to kids. We're getting lessons hooked up to kids. Jennifer and Bo are are working extremely hard and getting technology to all our kids and or faculty. We're we're behind there a little bit in both the, you know, for you know, both district wide and some other things that I that I will, that I hope is addressed in the capital projects levy. And we've also spent the last week talking about coming back to school sometime in October. The earliest date we could conceivably come back, according to Dr. Unthank, is October fifth. I'm not sure we're going to be fully ready by then, so I am not setting a date. We will have some of our lit life skills kids coming in next week. I think there's, Shelley gave some numbers this morning and I think we're looking at around thirty, thirty two kids will be coming in. It's basically comparable and they're on an A A B B schedule. I think there's twenty A As and eighteen Bs or something like that. So we will have our first kids on campus a week from today. And then we're gonna move slowly and surely, very methodically. We got a meeting with a with a committee Wednesday afternoon. And then I have a full-fledged Zoom meeting with our community Wednesday evening at six o'clock. Tracy, what's the number that have signed up for that? Well over two hundred, has it hit three hundred yet?
Not yet.
So we're we're approaching three hundred. But, you know, again, it our our goals haven't changed. In the sense that while we want to meet kids in brick and mortar and we want to meet kids face to face, health and safety of our staff and students and parents and community is number one. I also think it's important that we perfect our virtual model. And that's one of the things that I'm going to talk about and I talked a little bit about with the principals today. And I'll talk to the staff about that on Wednesday. And in addition to that, you know, with the community.
Yeah, for a few.
The the other part of that is, you know, it it's naive, while it's exciting that the numbers are down from a coronavirus situation in Clallum County, I think it's naive to think that they're going to remain down for, you know, the next eight months. And we need to have our virtual teaching platforms perfected so in December or January or February, if we have to go back and 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 do virtual again for a few weeks, we can do that. Even at the, even if we have a snow day. I did remind Tracy and Megan this morning, we're not too far away from having to create our call list for snow days, but we may not have to have those snow days, maybe something of the past. It was mentioned by, I think, Director Gibson about coming back. I think, I don't know where O P M A is going to be. They usually wait till September thirtieth to make their decisions. But it's my understanding that somewhat they're going to make those decisions on a regional basis. So if our county is in good shape, we may be able to come back as early as October fifth or October, what's the other, next one, October nineteenth. And we have outfitted the boardroom in in multiple ways so that we can have a Zoom meeting in there and and the people can watch our meeting and or if there's a director or two that can't, has to show up by proxy, it'll, that will be available to them. So the the other thing I want to talk about a little bit is athletics and at student activities. You know, as we move forward and the numbers continue to go down, again, the first actual school sports is basketball practice is scheduled to start on December twenty eighth. The W I A said, you know, we can do some off-season conditioning run by coaches starting a week from today, but our insurance company has to give us clearance to do that. And I'm checking on that, but it would be similar to some things we did this summer where coaches would take their athletes through the health and safety protocols, including taking their temperature and those things and work with their athletes five at a time and do that on a staggered basis. But before we move forward with that, we need clearance from our insurance company. And I'm trying to get that as as we move forward. I hope to have a document ready to upload to our our website by the end of the week, articulating our plans as we move forward to reopen with students. Know it will be slow, know it will be methodical and know that health and safety are our first concerns. That's what I have.
All right, thank you. Any any questions for Superintendent Clark?
Mr. Chair, just noting, I do have a question about the burglar incident, but I think it would be best asked offline, so I will do that.
No, I don't. All I know is they've caught, there was some vandalism and holler and the stadium concession stand, they think they have the individuals who who did it and it's now in the hands of law enforcement.
Great, thank you.
Director Stauffer.
Yep. Yes, thank you, Superintendent. When you mentioned Assistant Superintendent Mon and then Bo, yeah, I wanted to put a shout out to them, especially Bo, because I was having some major laptop issues last week and trying to get this survey and all that done. And he was doing the good work over at the middle school. And I came in and he got me a new one and got it going. And so I really appreciate that work. And and I got to see the the handing out of computers to students at the same time. So a very important vital part. And so very appreciated of Bo's and Assistant Superintendent Mon's work.
Director Jeffries.
Yeah, I know decline in enrollment wasn't what we expected. Do we know yet what kind of financial impact that might have on us?
Well, yes. Right now, we're probably somewhere between eighty five and a hundred students down. So if you use about eleven thousand dollars per student, we're we're looking at somewhere between nine fifty and a million, a million dollars, maybe a little bit more. Darlene stole a little bit of my thunder and I wanted to give the board her and Victoria credit for the work they did last spring. And granted, it was not easy work. We did cut our employee ranks in 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 multiple classifications, all classifications in fact, with which, excuse me, with the exception of secretarial. But I would tell you this, that work enables us to go for the next three months without laying off or furloughing anyone as long as our enrollment stays where it is and or goes up. I'm expecting it as we open up. Our kindergarten numbers are not good. And if you look around the state and around the country, excuse me, kindergarten numbers are down around the country. Parents aren't sending their kids to school. Our kindergarten numbers are somewhere in the neighborhood of a hundred and a half, hundred and fifty five. And we're used to have, last year was was a low year for us at one seventy six, one seventy seven. We're usually at one ninety to two hundred. But I I read multiple articles that kindergarten numbers are down. I'm hoping when we, you know, because that will be the first grade we bring back in in the A A B B model, I'm hoping when we open things up, parents will reconsider the homeschooling or remember from a legal standpoint, you don't have to send your kid to school till they're eight years old. And you don't see it as much now because we have all-day kindergarten. But if you go back, and I don't know how many years it's been in Squim, but I'll just, for this conversation, I'll say ten. When you go back to when school districts had half-day kindergarten, there were multiple individuals wouldn't send because of daycare issues and transportation and things, many parents didn't send their kids to kindergarten. They sent them to first grade. And I I I'm not sure that it's not a little bit that's going to happen. And I'm even hearing, reading things about kindergarten and this year being a gap year for some of those five-year-olds when I when I read articles from around the country. But that's where, but it it's interesting in our enrollment. The other thing I would add we have not, O S P I is being a little bit lenient with us. And they've kind of changed the rules for the September P two twenty three, which is the enrollment report that Tracy sends in on a monthly basis. They're allowing, if you're here, if a student is here one day in September, they're allowing us to count them. Where in in previous years, you had to be in school for at least one of the first four days. So they're being a little bit lenient with our September enrollment. But the, it will, you know, be all the same in October. So that's only about one tenth of the situation. While our kindergarten numbers are down dramatically, all of our K five numbers are down. Our six twelve numbers are are down, but really in some cases only in minute numbers. So I I do think this is, you know, kind of an elementary childcare type situation. And as we move forward to open, I I hope many of those children come back.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, moving on. Next up, we have our I cap grant approval.
Assistant Superintendent Mon and Director Olson, the floor is yours.
Good evening, everybody. This is Jennifer and I have Jody on the line with me. Attached is the very long twenty-page I grant for the highly capable program that we submit every year. There's not a lot of changes, there's just a few little nuances and I'll go ahead and turn it over to Jody and she can explain what those are. And then if you have any questions for for me or her, we'll take those when we're done. So go ahead, Jody.
Sure. Well, let's see, most of the changes we made were to last year's program, the prior years. And so this report for this year, the changes are really minute. Things where we had to change, they gave us the option of college and the high school courses of marking those down. But and then we've added some additional identifiers to help us further identify students from underrepresented groups. And one of those is called a CLED scale. And I shared that out with teachers today. I'll go over it more in in further detail with them going forward. But our numbers are looking really good for our students that that we're identifying. And the initial numbers that we ran is showing that we are mirroring the district's overall percentages of underrepresented groups. So our, the students look, our, every, the program's going well. We're doing a nice job of identification. Jenny, is there anything else on there you want me to cover?
I don't I don't think so, Jody. I didn't know if the board had any questions for Director Jeffries and Director Pickens, just for your information. Last year, there were some new WACs and RCWs that came out of this state. So Jody and I did a a pretty intensive overhaul the last 18 months of the Highly Capable Program and how we identify students. And I think the beauty of that is that we're seeing it mirroring our current enrollment in terms of students that are in Highly Capable reflect the students that we have in the district. And so I'm happy to see that. But if you have any questions for Jody and I specifically, we're happy to take those now.
Director Jeffries?
I guess my hand was still up, if that's fine. I want to thank them for all that hard work and how important that HighCAP is. And I must admit, I haven't read all 20 pages of the the grant yet, but I'm working on it. You believe me? Thank you for all your hard work.
You're welcome, of course.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you both for your hard work from particularly last year and working through this and then bringing this forward to us again this year. Always appreciated. And with that said, this is here as a action item.
Mr. Chair, I'd move to approve as presented, and I do have a comment when appropriate.
Okay, we've got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Go ahead, Director Ku.
Great, thank you. I just recognize I'd be absolutely remiss not to call out Mrs. Olson right now for being a recipient family of her services. And just a conversation my wife and I have had frequently about her excellence and keeping engaged with our students and, you know, really, just a a lot of teachers are doing this too, but Mrs. Olson has just been a shining example of continued outreach following up. I know there's more than once I've owed her a call back in regard to one of my students. So been very proactive and just want to recognize that here and now.
Oh, thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Director Ku. Yeah, Jody has been invaluable. This she worked tons of hours over the summer and and this fall, just like all of our teachers are. But when you have to oversee a specific program, there's always nuances and real specific needs. And Jody's really gone above and beyond to to connect with all of our HighCAP students. And Jody, correct me, we're 200 and we're 230. I know I know we just took some new students in. So how many HighCAP students are there total that you oversee?
Currently, we're at 250.
Yes, I wanted the board. So there's 250 highly capable students in the district. So
We are spread out amongst all the buildings right now. And we're trying to take this year to to based upon the feedback I've gotten from teachers and students and families to really focus on professional development so that the most programs helps or support for HighCAP is coming directly through the teachers. And then the work I'm providing is strictly enrichment so that we're not overloading families. I know it it's quite a bit right now trying to to manage just general assignments. And but that being the case, this is a program that will continue to adapt and evolve as our situation changes and more kids get back in the building. So what the program looks like this week, it may look different next week.
All right, we got a couple of hands up. Director Stoffer?
Yes, I just want to give shout outs, thank yous to Jody. She's the glue between all of our buildings. I because she's in all of our buildings and just all that the program there. It's outstanding. And hopefully, we can keep the legislators providing money for HighCAP. So thank you.
Thank you.
And Director Pickens?
Yeah, just just echo what some of my other board members have said. I appreciate especially the work with taking great effort to to identify those. I know that can be challenging, particularly if you don't have necessarily their the referrals coming in from from home at times and trying to make sure that those kids that might be in high poverty are identified as well, because we have certainly the same proportion and of those kiddos can be considered HighCAP as well. So I know there's some challenging work there, and I appreciate you making it a priority.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, thanks. So with that said, we have motion in a second on this. Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Right, motion carries. Room for another, yeah. All right. Thank you both again. All right, moving on. Next, we have our policy review calendar. Our extensive policy review calendar.
I don't necessarily know that this needs approval. I think this is something we talked about Thursday night. Our first policy review, Tracy, is going to be October 14, correct?
Correct.
I see that Director Stoffer has his hand up.
Yes, I just I think I sent that out to everybody where I verified the services that WASDA offers and sent that an email to everybody type thing. But I support this calendar and the good work that Tracy and Assistant Superintendent have done on this. And then I know that there's a long road ahead, too, to get with a review. And it takes that keen eye to look through all these. So thank you.
All right, Director Jeffries?
I'm more in favor actually of having a motion. So we lock this in place. We go on record that this is what we're going to do. I've been concerned about policies. So I move that we approve the policy review calendar as written.
I second.
Mr. Chair, before it's read back, can I offer a friendly amendment?
Sure.
Recognizing that this is a daunting task and not suggesting we shy away from it, I would only respect or just request that we add that the superintendent and the chair can modify as needed. Just noting that this is an unusually high level of work. And I support the calendar and prepared to vote in favor of the motion, but it's kept me up at night since last Thursday.
Yeah, that I appreciate that that comment there. I guess that would be my, to be honest, was my one kind of concern. I have no doubt that we will that these tasks would be accomplished. But by formalizing this, it it doesn't allot for any leniency or and this is a lot of work and things could happen to maybe alter that timeframe one way or the other. So
Director Jeffries, would you accept a friendly amendment to include the caveat that the superintendent and chair may modify as needed throughout the term?
Yeah, I'd be in favor of that as needed. I'm one that, again, made a motion because I think we need to lock this in because we have I did go through all the policies at one time as a new board member, and we have some that are definitely in need of updating. And so I could I could go along with your friendly amendment. If it doesn't get pushed off too much, I think this is something we really need to do. Now that may have just complicated. Go ahead.
Did you have something? Assistant Clark?
I concur with Director Jeffries.
Oh, yeah.
And sorry, Mr. Chair, not to butt in, just as a matter of process, Mr. Stoffer, do you agree to the friendly amendment or concur?
Yes, I do.
Okay. All right. So with that said, on the table, we have a motion to approve the policy review calendar with the authority for minor adjustments. And how we would actually state this, but as needed adjustments, but within meeting this I would say critical adjustments. Maybe that would be the that clarify. Director Ku?
That's it. That was the spirit of the friendly amendment, was just the chair and the superintendent reserve the authority to adjust as needed.
Yeah, okay. Okay. With that said, then all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Yep.
I don't have a second, actually. I only have that.
We had a we had a motion from Director Jeffries and a second from Director Stoffer and
Thank you.
They, yes, and there we go.
Thank you.
You got it. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Here we go. Any opposed, same sign? All right, motion carries. And let us know how we can support with that. Okay, moving on. Next up, we have acknowledgement of tribal land discussion. Let's follow up from our prior discussion. And you're presenting, Dr. Clark, you're muted.
Could you please make that just a hair bigger if possible? This is what I'm recommending that we I did not get a chance to talk to anyone at the tribe, but this is what has been used in the past. And I would recommend that this is what is read before every board meeting.
Chair, Director Stoffer, I make a motion to approve as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Got a couple of hands up there. Which one? Director Jeffries, I'll let you go first.
I would say still needs to be run by the tribe, but, you know, if they approve it, I don't think there's any problem. If they have a main concern, then we might have to come back and modify it, which would be fine.
Director Ku?
Oh, accidentally hit a button. Sorry if I'm sharing a screen. Completely agree with Director Jeffries. That was my only caveat. I'm prepared to vote in favor of the motion, but I think the final ratification of this needs to lie with the tribe.
Yep. Director Stoffer, did you have something at? Director Stoffer? Was your hand still left up from?
Oops, I'm sorry. I mute button. I would like to see us invite tribal elders to a meeting when we do the first reading of this, or of course, after we verified that approval. But it'd be good to have them at a meeting. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Anything else? Okay, with that said, all those in favor of statement as written, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? All right, motion carries. Okay, next up, we got staffing and budget.
We can move on. I've already said my piece.
Okay. Legislative priority discussion is up next. We just spent some time in a legislative workshop there. Anybody has any anything to continue on with that? We need a
I assume we, excuse me, Director, go ahead, Brian.
Good.
Your your hands up.
That's fine, Larry. You got the hot mic. Go ahead.
Yep, go ahead. Go ahead, Larry. You're already on it.
I was going to say I assume we need some kind of motion authorizing Director Stoffers our legislative rep to represent us using the template that was presented with the some of the flexibility that we discussed earlier. Is is that what we need?
Well, this wasn't specifically a a action item. I don't know that that's a I think just kind of back to with our policy review calendar. It would be if someone wanted to put a motion out there, it would be, you know, okay to do that.
Well, then I'll put such a motion out there, and we'll see what happens. So I moved that that Director Stoffers our legislative rep represents us at the General Assembly as the certificated voting member and using our template, our survey as a guide with a little bit of flexibility to vote on our behalf.
I will second that motion.
Okay. A motion is saying, any any discussion on that motion?
And Mr. Chair?
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I absolutely agree with having a motion. I I guess what I would consider or I would suggest we consider is Director Stoffer did proffer a recommendation on the primacy of focus with the slate given. And this was also in addition to what Director Pickens had said about, you know, if there's something that made a high priority but really is not strongly applicable to our district, ensuring that he and I believe he does already have the discretion, Director Stoffer, as our designated ledge rep to to not, you know, essentially not be forced to include that. So I guess I don't know if this is inappropriate here, but my what I would have moved or suggest would have moved is you know, proceed with the prioritized slate that the survey produced, but give the consideration of primacy to and forgive me, Director Stoffer, I'm forgetting what you would call it out specifically is, oh, the the timber sale revenues. I would also personally recommend primacy given to items affecting our pivot in light of COVID. So things like broadband access for students, you know, mental health resources and the like. And I guess the third leg of that stool would be any disruption to funding as also as a result of the COVID crisis. So I don't know if that fits within the spirit of Director Jeffrey's motion, but that's where my mind was at.
Yeah, I think I think, you know, I would I understand the point there, Director Ku. I think if, you know, looking at those priority issues and how they kind of landed. It seemed to me that that several of those were up at the top of that list and kind of met that, you know, 14 to 20 range that Director Stoffer was talking about as it was. But you know, and I think that was something we we did discuss too during our our workshop as well. But, you know, hopefully, I'm not missing something there. Director Stoffer's got his hand up.
Yes, thank you, colleagues, for that motion and motion and then support of and trust in my abilities to represent our, our board, but actually more importantly, represent our students in this, and I think I have demonstrated that for the last four years with this work, and I promise I will continue with that. We'll call it steely eye focus on our squim and making sure we're at the table for these, and yes, all those items that Director Ku brought up, they're, they're on that list or in my mind. And I, I will add that as I was in this meeting, WASDA sent me a text and, and said, hey, remind people to watch Glenna Gallo, who's OSPI Special Ed Director, she has a video on that General Assembly page. And that is one of the areas to focus too, because it was an area that we were fighting last year to get extra sped money. Because we know it's one of those areas that's not fully funded, and it's still in a question. So I will be putting that as one of our high priorities as it was last year too. So, but otherwise, I, I think I have a very firm, strong grasp of my responsibilities, and I will go forth and do those.
Director Pickens?
Yeah. Just, just, I think noteworthy that there were, were so many, so many items that that either all the board either support or strongly supports, and I think that that, that, that unity there I think is good, and it will, it will, will help, help us to stay focused, not only now, but when, when the work begins and when the legislative session starts. Also, just to speak to, I believe Director Ku had mentioned it or in the message just about welcoming further, further discussion and/or debate, one thing I will, I will note that it really just took kind of one board member to, to really skew that issue down. So as, as we lead up to the legislative session, I would, I would certainly welcome further discussion on, on, on some of these, because you know, it could be that just, there's, there's a lot, there's a lot of meat to all of this, so I think that could be beneficial to, to all of us and maybe change some not change some, but just give, give different perspectives, so leading it, I would want to consider that before the, you know, leading up to the legislative session.
Yeah. Yeah, Director Ku?
Here's my unmute. This is half of what Director Pickens just said was half of some of the comments I had captured, but I think maybe just with the spirit of this discussion tonight, I'll save that for board comments at the next meeting, just observations and questions. But I will pile on and say I agree wholeheartedly. You know, there's challenges with us going in the direction of a more engaged board. And I think I personally am welcoming them, some of these nuanced discussions. These weren't a problem when this board, how do I say this politely, when this board wasn't as engaged in the past. So I think this is a hallmark of good progress being made. And I appreciate the fact that we're, we're having the complexity of these discussions, so I'll just leave it at that tonight.
I would agree, I would agree, Brian, that's what we were kind of talking about during the workshop as well, is that you know, as this progress, as this process has evolved over the last few years, that, you know, we've all been involved on the board. It does, it does get a little more challenging. But, but challenging in the process of moving it to a the best format we can, we can make, so you know, just appreciate everybody, appreciate everybody's engagement as well. And, and I will just say this before I go back over to Jim real quick, and then we move on with the vote. That, you know, again, everybody does have the opportunity to participate at the, you know, during the session. And, you know, and then, and there's always an opportunity to, as we're listening, to communicate you know, back and forth as well on, you know, maybe some issues that you know, come up, so just kind of encourage that, that communication piece as well. Director Stoffer, and then we'll go to a vote.
Yes, three things, be good to hear how our students, any input before we take the vote. And then two other points, there are some legislative workshops coming up, there's one at Senator Wellman. And I listed it out there, and I, I will be posting things hot and fast usually with this is an opportunity for you, and and then when those, from there, when those bills start rolling out, which it typically occurs after December, and when there's some request for input type thing, and I'll be putting those out there, so. But could we ask our students real quick before we go to the vote, please, Director Gibson?
Absolutely. They'd like to chime in?
I don't have any questions, but I appreciate it, like all the work you guys are doing.
Thank you, Olivia. Alyssa?
Same, it was really nice taking being part of the, what we did with the General Assembly. It was my first time, so I, I did not know what to do exactly, but with the help of Olivia, I, I really got to the point where I was like, okay, now I understand what I'm doing, so thank you.
Well, great, thank you for jumping in, just, you know, couple of weeks into your term here and, and participating, we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, with that said, all those in favor of the motion at hand, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign? All right, motion carries. Okay, next up, we have our second reading, approval of excused and unexcused absences.
Mr. Chair had moved to approve as presented.
All right. Do we have a second?
I'll second. I'll second, Jeffries.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Mr. Chair, just a comment about, you know, the, I think Director Jeffries noted in our last meeting that really the the science, maybe that, or the art, I guess, really comes through and how the procedures are developed. And with this one especially, I know there was some consternation with how we shifted in our procedures of, you know, tracking excused absences and, and the like, and so I know that's something our staff continues to work on and just would encourage you know, seeking that fine balance between, you know, obviously legally compliant, that's most important, but you know, I'm, I'm forgetting the term I'm thinking of, just not as, not as cumbersome for families as well, so just a comment as we approve the policy tonight.
Right, great. Okay. With that said, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? All right, motion carries. Next up, we have a second reading of Policy 3414, infectious disease.
So moved.
Second?
I'm sorry, excuse me, President Gibson, can I interrupt just briefly?
Absolutely.
You'll see a 9/21 update here, Dr. Kleiker, I apologize for not bringing this up to you earlier, but this is the last, I think, one or two times that we've updated this. There's a second paragraph that says this. And it should say this, and that is from our wonderful district nurse, Sonia Bitner. So if we could we don't require the health form to be filled out every year, basically, is the short of it.
Okay.
So if we could approve with this amendment, that would be great.
Since I made the motion, I'm good with that.
I think Director Pickens, you jumped in at this with the second?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, all right, so we have motion and a second with the, with the change here at the bottom. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign? All right. Next up, we have second reading and approval of Policy 3418, response to student injury or illness.
Moved to approve as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion from Director Ku, second from Director Pickens, any discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? All right, and last one, we have second reading and approval of Policy 6512, infection control program.
So moved as presented.
So I've got a motion from Director Stoffer, and I think that's a follow up with Director Jeffries, so we'll take that. Any discussion?
Just one, since I'm concerned about policy, I was talking to Tracy earlier, and I appreciate all her hard work, I think she told me there was something like from the time we approved tonight, something like 10 steps that have to be taken before it actually gets published, so I want people to be aware that it it's a, it's a major undertaking to get these published and online, so everybody can see them. And I appreciate all her hard work and all the staff and whoever she recruits to do that.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you, Larry. Okay. All those in favor of Policy 6512, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign? All right, well, with that said, thank you all. Anybody with anything for the good of the order?
Mr. Chair, I missed an opportunity earlier to call out our fellow director, Mr. Pickens, as one of our educators in the region who's also in the trenches, so just, just sharing that you've been on my mind, Eric, and want to support as best we can and appreciate the work you do on, in and out of the trench.
Thank you.
All right, Director Stoffer, you had your hand up.
Ah, yes, I forgot about this back at Board Communications, but the annual conference is fast approaching also, and there's some early bird signups with reduction in, in fees. So just kind of wondering where we are on that type thing, but, because the early bird expires on the 2nd of October.
Well, I think we were, the last I knew was connecting with Tracy on your individual desire to participate in that virtually.
People have connected with me, the only thing I don't know if there are particular sessions that need to be identified for attendance.
Got it.
And I can connect those individuals, connect with them directly.
Okay, thank you. Director Jeffries?
Yeah, I would just add to the annual conference, I saw some publicity or mention from WASDA, they are going to try to make special sessions specifically designed for our student reps, so I think looking forward to those and how that might be helpful. Also, I still like to remember, or remember, remind Dr. Clark, I'm still looking to be adopted by an elementary, middle school, high school teacher, so I can kind of have the same opportunity to look over my imaginary student shoulder at some of the lessons that are, and how that's going over in the schools. So I would appreciate that.
Okay, and
I'll get to that.
Director Pickens?
Just my compliments to the chair on effective time management of the meeting, I'm looking at what time it is, so props, props to user.
Don't jinx it.
I thought I was safe.
Thanks, thanks for that, you kind of stole my thunder, I was like, look at that, we're out of here before 7:30 today, so no, thank you, everybody, for, for a good, good meeting, we've had some good conversations over the last few meetings and just appreciate, you know, the openness and candor that we've had with, with some discussions lately. But with that said, meeting adjourned. I think it's still a football game on, if anybody's into that.
Go Hops, thank you.
The Las Vegas Raiders.
Still doesn't roll off the tongue, though.
No.
Yeah. Good night, gang.
Good night.
Thank you, good meeting.